A baby is born. Cute. He's already surrounded by technology. By age four, she knows how to use a smartphone. He's reading. No, not from this, this. She's making a digital presentation. You don't even know what that is. He has an interest. No, not that, that. By middle school, she has built her own website and her first app. In high school?
With my Michelson interferometer, I can measure down to the fraction of the wavelength of light.
The world is changing. And they are preparing for jobs that don't even exist yet.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to the Orange County School Board meeting tonight. Tonight, we have invited a very special team of coaches and administrators to be with us from Colonial High School. And we are recognizing them for literally saving a student's life. We often talk at this board table about saving students academically, but this time, it was the real thing. The story is inspiring and it is heroic, and I'll explain more in a moment. But first, I'd like to invite up to the podium Coach Renee Placencia and Coach Mike Short to come to the podium and lead us all in the pledge in a moment of silence. Please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Well, thank you, Coach P and Coach Short. We are so proud to have all of you from Colonial with us tonight. And I must start this story by saying that it is one of those rare stories that has an incredibly happy ending. Last month, an 11th grade student was jogging around the track at Colonial High School during physical education warmups when he unexpectedly collapsed. Coach Renee Placencia, Coach Short, and Shawn Grove immediately took action. They began by checking the student's vitals. The boy was unresponsive and not breathing. The coaches immediately began chest compressions while calling 911. Coach Grove cleared the other students from the area and alerted administrators from the main office. Coach Short and Assistant Principal Wasco did chest compressions for about five minutes when the defibrillator and paramedics arrived. The paramedics used the school's defibrillator twice when the student's heart began to finally beat again. The principal, Dr. Prince, and the assistant principal, Mr. Canemas, went to the hospital with the student and waited for his parents. And today, I am happy to report to you that that student has now made a full recovery and his diagnosis will allow him to participate in any and all activities in a normal life. Ladies and gentlemen, although we never ever want this to happen, this is exactly the way our staff, teachers, and administrators should respond when such an emergency occurs. And we want to thank all of you for your quick action, your level-headedness, your calmness, and your knowledge in responding to this type of emergency. We are joined tonight by that student, very special person, Mr. Tyler Crane. Tyler, stand up and let us recognize you. We're truly happy that you are here and thankful to the Lord that you are here as well. And your parents are also here with us tonight. Mr. and Mrs. Crane, you must feel so very, very incredibly blessed to have Tyler with us today. And I think I would be remiss, and we all would be remiss, to not have those coaches and administrators stand and allow us to give you a rousing round of applause for your bravery. And now it is my unfortunate job, fortunate to be able to ask them to come up here and let us shake their hands. Unfortunate because we don't have a school board medal for bravery and calm-headedness. I feel like we need to create a medal for situations such as this, but we do have a certificate, and it seems to be such a small thing for such heroic acts. But before I do that, let me recognize your school board member, Ms. Daryl Flynn. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recently, I participated in the Colonial High School Homecoming Parade, and it was at that time that I learned of the bravery of our coaches and the miracle for Tyler. And when I was talking to the coaches, they were so humble. They were so humble and so pushing away any kind of accolades. And I just wanted to thank them for that in talking to Mr. and Mrs. Crane. Mr. Crane, I hope you don't mind if I say some of the words you just said, that the doctor said because of their care, their son was able to survive this, and that there had been another situation earlier at that hospital where that same outcome wasn't the same. And it was, it is because of these gentlemen here and their calm and knowledgeable actions and the fact that they worked together that we had this happy outcome. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart because it's times like this that you say it's great to be a Grenadier.
Well said, Ms. Flynn. And now, coaches and administrators, if you could, we would like to shake your hand. And Tyler, and your parents, I know the board would like to shake your hand as well. and Orange County Public Schools. And you know, it's not often that we get to recognize the media. And I'm so happy when we can recognize the media. We get to recognize tonight WFTV Channel 9. Their general manager, Shawn Bartelt, who just happens to be a neighbor of mine, and her son and daughter are also good friends with my children, is here to accept this recognition on behalf of her student. Ms. Bartelt, can you please come to the podium? And I'm going to brag on WFTV for a moment, and I'm hoping that by bragging on WFTV, maybe we can get all our media to step up to the plate the way WFTV did for us, Shawn.
No, I don't need that competition.
No, you don't. As it was coming out of my mouth, I realized I was saying the wrong thing. In case you didn't know, WFTV is our local ABC affiliate in Orlando, and they are the largest station in town with more reporters than anyone else. Just ask our media relations staff. WFTV partners with Orange County Public Schools on many events throughout the school year, but last year, we went to them to ask for something new. And I will be candid, board members, when we went to them with hat in hand, I really did not know whether they would bite on our request. What we went to them to ask was to ask them to help Orange County Public Schools highlight some of our best and our brightest students in our district through a half-hour TV special on public education. And that TV special is centered on what is now an annual event for this district for recognizing what we call our super scholars, which happens every May. And those in this room who are with OCPS, you know, our super scholars are those students who are admitted to one of the top 20 universities in the United States of America or one of the top 20 liberal arts colleges in the United States of America. And we created it to highlight the fact that you can get a high-quality, highly rigorous education in Orange County Public Schools and can get admitted to the elite institutions of higher learning in America as a graduate of Orange County Public Schools. This past May, WFTV dedicated a team of people from anchors to producers to photographers and editors to help put this half-hour special together, and we could not have been more pleased with the result. I was sharing with Shawn a little bit ago, I was actually out of state when it aired, and because of my schedule, I didn't get around to actually watching it, I'm embarrassed to admit, until about seven or eight weeks ago. And when I did, I about fell out of my chair at the quality of the production. And what a wonderful job they did recognizing these students. The half-hour focus on public education in Orange County was just as we thought it would be, a great justice to Orange County Public Schools and what this district does each and every day to be the top producer of successful students in the nation. And I want to go off script here for a moment and also recognize that Ms. Bartelt is such a fervent believer in public education that her own two children attend Orange County Public Schools where they are getting a high-quality public education. So Shawn, thank you on behalf of the Orange County Public Schools and this board for the wonderful special. And since we are on air, she did offer to come back next year, so we're going to come back to you again next year and see if we can get you to air another special for us. And would you like to say a word or two before we award you again what seems to pale in comparison to what you did, but a certificate of our appreciation?
Well, I also want to thank the executive producer of that half-hour special, Anthony Colarossi, who's here, and Michelle Stevens, who is the coordinator of our Nine Family Connection Public Service Campaign that airs on Channel 9. It aired as a Nine Family Connection special in primetime. And just, I know how hard, since my kids are in public school, I know how hard the teachers work, I know how hard the administration works, and I think that they've gotten an incredible education. They went to Blakenour there at Boone, and nothing but great things to say about the system. And then you talk about my kids being in high school. I was just talking to Daryl, and we went to high school together, same year, and her son's 29. I did something, I don't know what I did wrong. But I know how hard each and every one of you work, but I certainly know how hard the teachers and the administrators in your system work and really appreciate it. And I think the kids work really hard, too. And I know the kids in that special, it was just unbelievable what they've accomplished and how they've accomplished it, and we all should be very, very proud.
Well, thank you, Shawn, so much. And Shawn, the board would like to shake your hand and Anthony and Michelle's hand as well for producing this special for us. All right, now Sherri, don't worry, I'm going to go totally off-script now, but if we as a board look particularly satiated up here, I love that word, you never get to use it, it's because we had an incredible meal before this board meeting, and it was by one of our school district volunteers, somebody who does so much for this district. I'm going to let Mr. Roach talk about her a little bit more. But Peggy Avery, who we actually should be cooking dinner for for all that she has done for us, prepared us a Halloween feast, and all of it was centered around pumpkin, and it was some of the best cooking that we've ever had. So Peggy, thank you so much to you and your husband, Mark, for doing this for us. It was incredibly sweet, generous gesture on your part. Thank you. Mr. Roach?
Yes, I wanted to, board members, I want to brag on who we call Ms. Peggy in District 3, and to tell you how lucky I am to have this woman in our district and her husband, Mark, who's always by her side and helps her. But before I say that, I want to thank Doug Loftus, the principal at Acceleration Academy, for financing this event tonight. He was not the cook and the chef, but he did put it together. So Doug, please swear you, I want to acknowledge you, thank you so much for that, and Acceleration Academy tonight. I attended their open house. It was one of my favorite schools. I know that many of you have been up there as well. But Ms. Peggy, in addition to cooking our dinner tonight, was one of the people that I appointed to be on the reapportionment committee. Now, that committee, those two people I appointed probably should never speak to me again. That was enormous amount of time and hours over a four, five, six-month period. They spent more time in this boardroom probably than board members, and that was, there's no doubt about that. So I want to thank her first of all for that event. But Ms. Peggy is a former volunteer of the year in Orange County Public Schools, awarded several years ago, and I think she'd have probably gotten it every year they decided to pass it around because she dominated it. But she's the kind of person, I will tell you that I will get a phone call from Ms. Peggy several times a week saying, Rick, I've got this particular school and they need this, and I've knocked on the door of this bank and they're going to help us and they're going to buy this. So whatever school seemed to need, she somehow figures out a way to get it to them. We'll be dedicating a new canopy, for goodness sakes, over at McCoy Elementary School. They're painting some of the area over there, and so that was badly in need of some paint. So she was able to pull that off. So tonight, I thought, well, I'm going to combine this particular moment of praise with this. And this year, the board members had got something very special. We all got 50 gold coins. 50 gold coins, not for us, but to give to people who did things above and beyond the call of duty. And they are gorgeous. It simply has our district here and our name and our school board member, Orange County. On the back is the mission statement, and it is so nice that I thought about awarding myself one of these personally. But Ms. Peggy, come up here, and I want to give you this, and please help me join one of the finest volunteers we have in this county with our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to picture this right here. Turn around here. Thank you. The greatest school board you can have.
Aw, thank you.
That is so sweet.
I made our month. Thank you, Ms. Avery.
That's fabulous.
All right, well, Dr. Jenkins, let me now go into recognizing the finest administrators any district in the state of Florida has. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman. We have several. First of all, Michael Gladon was the resource teacher at Oak Hill Elementary. He will be the new assistant principal at Ridgewood Park Elementary.
I would like to thank the school board for their support, especially Ms. Kathleen Gordon, who I've worked under for about the last five years, and looking forward to working with Ms. Nancy Robinson. And you, Dr. Jenkins, for your support, and the rest of the staff, and my mentors, Dr. Shanoff and Dr. June Jones, who's here tonight, the principal of Oak Hill, who spent the last three years giving about every test, as you can imagine, but I've taken them on his stride and done them all. And then I've still got other people here, I can't mention all the names, and then my lovely wife, stand up. Ms. Jocelyn Harold is also an administrator here in Orange County. Thank you.
Next, we have Mallory Holiday, who was the resource teacher and academic coach, and she will be the new assistant principal at Audubon Park Elementary.
I would like to thank Dr. Jenkins and staff for the opportunity to serve at Audubon Park. I look forward to working with Nancy Robinson and my new principal, Anna Faratusco, at Audubon. Thank you to my mentors at Ivy Lane, Ms. Harold and Ms. Mulcrone. I would not be standing here today without their support and my wonderful family and friends that are here today. I would not be where I am today without their continued love and support, so thank you.
You know what, it is okay to introduce your family.
My wonderful husband's in the back with our baby. It's my husband's birthday today. He's here with us celebrating. And I have my dad, Vic, with us, my brother Victor, mother-in-law Carol, grandmother-in-law Clara, cousin Terry, and several close friends who I have worked with over six years at Ivy Lane. So thank you.
Good. Megan Rivera was media specialist at Weatherby. She will be the new assistant principal at Shingle Creek Elementary.
Thank you. I'd like to thank first God, because he has put me in all the right places and has helped me meet all the right people that I needed to meet in order to get to where I am today. And I'd also like to thank the school board, Kat Gordon, for allowing me to be part of your district. I've worked for many years under Mr. Roach, and I've enjoyed that, and I'm glad to be going over to the other side. And I also want to thank the superintendent and your staff for allowing me to have this opportunity as well. I have my family here to thank, my wonderful husband and my son, Armando and Diego, and for their love and support unconditionally and for putting up with all my hours of having to do a lot of extra stuff. But also my mentors, Belinda Reyes and Mr. Linlaw, who is now my, well, not anymore, my principal, but my new principal, who's having me join her over there at Shingle Creek. I'm thankful for them. And I have some other extended family here that are neighbors and friends and coworkers that have been the support that I've thoroughly enjoyed and needed along the way. So thank you.
Next, we have Michelle Wiggins, who was instructional support teacher at Winter Park High School. She will be the new assistant principal at Freedom Middle.
I'd like to thank Chairman Sublet and the school board. My former school board member, Ms. Cato, thank you for all your support. My new school board member, Mr. Roach. I would like to thank Mr. Dr. Jenkins and her staff for the opportunity to serve Freedom Middle School. Mr. Smith, thank you for all your leadership and guidance. I appreciate everything that you've done. My colleagues and friends here tonight, thank you for coming. Mr. Johns, I'm looking forward to serving Freedom Middle School. And I have here with me tonight my 12-year-old daughter, who has prepared me for middle school. And my mom is here. I thank you for all your support and love and dedication while I was on my career path. And then my extended family, I call her my mom, Ms. Lotenio is here with me tonight as well. Thank you.
Allison Muse was senior administrator for exceptional student education. She will be the new assistant principal at Wyndham Lakes Elementary.
Good evening. I would like to thank Mr. Sublet, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jara, Judge Roach, and the entire school board for affording me this amazing opportunity. I would also like to thank my ESE family and to my amazing, dedicated director, Mary Bridges. To our fantastic psychologists and social workers, your dedication to our school is inspirational, and I was honored to be part of your team. To my new family in the southeast, Dr. Vasquez, Mr. Larson, and my new principal, Mr. Schrefler, thank you for believing in me. Thank you for all the great leaders that encouraged me along this journey. Additionally, I would like to thank my friends and colleagues who are here for me today that support and encourage me every day. Finally, I would like to say thank you to my parents, Ira and Jeannie, my daughters, Skylar and Peyton, and my amazing husband for their unconditional support and encouragement.
I'm going to allow General Counsel to make our last introduction, but my very first principal from Ecclestone Elementary School is here. I will never have him in the audience and not recognize Mr. Rufus Brooks. Would you stand so everyone can see you? He certainly was a legend and part of that wonderful school in Ms. Gordon's district, and certainly always want to acknowledge him for his care that he has given for years to this district. So he is related, actually, to someone that General Counsel is going to introduce.
School board members, Mr. Chairman, members of the audience, it is with great pleasure over the last couple of years since I've been a general counsel, we have been partnering up with Berry College of Law and the Florida A&amp;M College of Law and bringing in young minds and young law students here for very meager wages, usually a lunch, maybe two, some mentoring, some guidance. We have seen these young minds develop in the practice and eventually move on to bigger and better things. But we've had one candidate that we've brought back the last three years, and that candidate is Jared Brooks, who has been a fine contributor to our legal department on a number of different issues. He is a graduate of Apopka High School. He is a graduate of Rollins College. He is a graduate now of the Florida A&amp;M University College of Law, and he was recently admitted to the Florida bar with a passing score. As many of you may know, he is also related to a great number of community folks in our community administrators. His aunt, I believe, sits somewhere in the dais up here. His father is a great administrator, was with the county and now is with the city. But more importantly, he has done this on his own merit and his own accomplishments. He will be working extensively with our pupil assignment folks. He will be working with our student discipline group. He'll be taking on some of the responsibilities of our workers' compensation and our investigation on whistleblowers and other things that he has yet to understand what he's going to be working on. But it's with great pleasure that I announce that tonight you will be approving the selection of Jared Brooks as our attorney one, who will handle all things related to the Office of Legal Services.
To God be the glory, to Chairman Sublet, the school board members, to Mr. Rodriguez. Just thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to zealously representing this district to the best of my ability. I'd like to thank my mother, Sandra Brooks, grandfather Rufus Brooks, my grandmother, Edith Brooks. Mr. Rodriguez, I look forward to working with you. Eileen Fernandez, John Pomarini, Sarah Corin, Carrie Ann Reggio, and the other legal department staff or legal services department staff. And just thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, I really just wanted to say that Mr. Brooks wasn't here for us. He really was here for his grandson, so it's okay. All right? But I do want to acknowledge also in the audience, Edith Brooks, a fellow, Edith is standing. I'd like to take that privilege, point of personal privilege, and have Mrs. Brooks to stand. A great educator, and none of them would be here if it had not been for Ms. Brooks. All right? And I dare not go into her background. She's been honored many times, you know, by this board and probably will be honored again in February because of the contribution and the history that we're trying to keep alive for the African-American community. I would like to say welcome to everyone tonight, but my heart really just wants to say to Megan Rivera, upon meeting Megan and knowing her and the time that she has been working in the district, she's a little fireball, isn't she? Stand up, Megan, again, just stand up. Look at her. Isn't she a little piece of leather well put together? And I'm really looking for great things. I love when they come to the board members and they tell us what they're going to do because they really know what they're doing when they do that. And those that do that, they succeed, so you're here, you're going to succeed. Because we are the ones that's pushing the superintendent and the chair to let our schools be the best that they can be. Everyone up at this table, we're concerned about our schools, we care about our school, but we just welcome you because you came with an attitude that's bar none. And I just want to thank John Rosnick for that, and I did get, I hope it was John. Maybe it wasn't John, but I think it was. But I really, was it John? Is he, thank you, it was John. But I really want to thank him because he was looking so hard to please me and the community, and I think you did a great job on that. I really wanted to say to Michael, I got to let Michael stand again. I've never met anybody like him in my life. This is Jocelyn's husband. Jocelyn, you can... Jocelyn, you can stand also because some of you may not know. Jocelyn is a principal in school board District 5. So, you have a husband and wife team, and we have been looking for African-Americans and Hispanics and Haitians to really help us to close that achievement gap. We have schools that are struggling, and it's because of the diversity within the school. And Dr. Jenkins started the transformation and the closing the achievement gap with Kathy Shula and Dr. James Lawson. And I want you to know that they have worked extremely hard. But I really want to say to Michael, Michael is one of the few that I know that there was nothing that happened at his school that I didn't know about. I would be sitting at the board table, and he would say, "Where are you? You need to be here." And I'm saying, "Michael, I'm at the board table. Well, come by when you get through." And basically, I did, and it really built a great camaraderie ship. I've been knowing his family in Apopka for years. He came from a great family, but you only introduced Jocelyn. Nobody else came for this great honor? I cannot believe it. Will y'all give him a round of applause? He is one, he's one of our great leaders. We boast, please, I'm going to just say it, and I'm going to say it in the front of the board. We get accused a lot by the community of not appointing diversity in leadership roles. And I want to say tonight, we, the superintendent has appointed you. The board will approve it, hopefully tonight. Please do not sign with anybody else that offer you anything. You stay right here in Orange County until we determine to send you elsewhere. All right? So, we love you. We thank you for your dedication, and you guys are going to make a great team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Mrs. Robinson.
I too want to congratulate all the people that were appointed tonight, all the new administrators. It's really exciting to have you all here. And in particular, the two that are coming to District 6, welcome to District 6. Mr. Gladon told me that he feels like he's coming home to Ridgewood Park because he started his career there teaching. So, that's really exciting to have you back at Ridgewood Park. I know you'll have a special place in your heart, and it's, we're excited for that energy to come back. And I look forward to coming out and seeing you out there. And then Mallory, I'm excited to have you join us at Autobahn Park. It's a great location. And did I see your son's pacifier? Is that your son with the frog hanging? That is possibly the cutest little pacifier. We were all looking at it earlier. So, I look forward to seeing him because he's a doll. So, anyway, and then Jared, I'm so excited that you're joining us. I mean, you've been with us, so I don't feel like it's going to be all that new, but I'm just glad that it's permanent. So, congratulations to you two. So, anyway, congratulations to all of you, and we look forward to seeing all the wonderful things you do. Thanks.
Ms. Moore.
I hope I'm going to be a little redundant here, but let me start first. Dr. Jenkins, this is a great group tonight. And it's just, it's, I really, in the last few years, really noticed the quality of people that have been selected for schools. It's really been improving, and it just makes it so much easier for us to do our job when we have the confidence that the schools are in good hands. But Mrs. Robinson, Mr. Gladon really said he was happy to be home in Pine Hills. He's two-timing me. "Mr. Gladon, you're supposed to be coming back to Phyllis Wheely." He serves on my homecoming committee. His family is a very longstanding, wonderful, respected family from South Apopka. And can I tell about your dad? There's this gentleman who writes these columns in The Cheap everywhere. He says, "Pryne Slim." And I read him, and boy, I better read him because my name hits that column every so often. And he either loves you or hates you. Lately, he's been happy because we're getting that school built. But one day, I was out campaigning, and Ms. Francina Boinkin took me around to see Michael Gladon Sr., and I never knew he was Pryne Slim. Yeah, you knew. I should ask you.
She is also undercover.
So, I'm sorry to say, Mrs. Robinson, but we're going to try to get him back to Apopka someday. All right. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
So, Gladon, you got women fighting over you. It must feel good. I haven't had that for decades.
Three of us up here.
Mr. Roach.
Thank you, Mr. Sublett. I'll keep mine short because Ms. Flynn told me to. But I, she's always telling me what to do over here. Y'all know that, but she does. The, I have 3 APs tonight. I'm very excited about it, and I like meeting you, you know, beforehand just to make sure. I really want to vote for you. But Michelle, welcome, Michelle, to Freedom Middle School. That school has a legacy of outstanding principals. It's fairly new school, but boy, there's been some real, real strong principals there. So, I know you'll back up the new fellow over there and keep that tradition going. To Allison, the AP at Wyndham Lakes, that's a great, it's one of my favorite schools to attend. Bob Schreffler treats me like gold out there when he comes, and he's just a fine guy. And to follow what he's doing out there with his teachers, he's one of those task-oriented, people-oriented principals I really like. And Megan, for you, Megan goes back the furthest with me because I think the day I got elected to the school board, she was out at Lancaster. And I figured something out very quickly when I visited Lancaster is that she had the coffee pot. She has it in her, in the media center, and I always went straight there to get the coffee, like you, Mr. Sublett, you're a big coffee drinker, you know. She was, I called it the watering hole is where it was. But she was part of that Riase gang out there. Every, everywhere you go where Belinda Reyes was, you get a lot of positive enthusiastic people. And Megan, you were fabulous there at Lancaster and Weatherby, and I will miss you sorely. It really will be tough going out there and not seeing you. But I wish you, all three of you, the best, and good luck to you.
Well, let me try to bring us in for a landing. First of all, Mrs. Brooks, you ought to write a book because you're a superwoman in my mind. Not only were you the woman behind a local legend, and I mean that in a literal sense, Mr. Rufus Brooks, but you are the mother of two highly respected members of this community, and Byron Brooks and Dr. Bridget Williams. And Jared, I don't know why you would want to stay in this community. I would fly all the way across the country because you have such big shoes to fill. And just the name alone, it's a really tough mountain you've got to climb being a Brooks in this community because of the reputation of your aunt and your father. But we're so glad that you decided to stay here in Orange County Public Schools and to join our legal team. And to our newly appointed administrators, I share this with every group of administrators because I think it is so true. Your appointment to this board signifies one singular word, and that word is trust. Trust in your abilities, trust in your leadership, trust in your judgment, and most importantly, trust trusting you with our children and with our community's future. So, congratulation on your appointments, your family members, your loved ones, your friends should all be extremely, extremely proud of you. Thank you for your service. And with that, why don't we do this? We'll pause for a moment because it is a school night, and you do have school tomorrow. And I want to thank our heroes for coming down this evening as well. And Sean, you and your team, Anthony, Michelle, thank you so much for what you did for us. And Peggy, thank you for the wonderful meal tonight. Thank you.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core state standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So, you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at CommonCoreWorks.org.
All right. Let's go ahead and get into the substance of our meeting. Let me make a couple of preliminary announcements. First of all, board members, we do not have a strategic plan update tonight. Let me announce to the audience, any individual who would like to address an item on our consent or non-consent agenda may do so by requesting an appropriate yellow form, such as this, from Ms. McGill. Ms. McGill is the lady at the far left-hand side of the dais. I will call you to speak when the item you have signed up for is before the board. Please understand that in accordance with parliamentary procedure, it is your opportunity to testify before the board. It's not a question-and-answer session, so please use your three minutes that you will have to provide us your testimony. If you have scheduling constraints, let us know. We'll try to accommodate those. Dr. Jenkins, at this time, are there any changes to our agenda?
There are, Mr. Chairman. Item 602 and 603 have a single sentence removed that was an oversight. Item 901 is withdrawn. That is request approval for revision to the Special Programs and Procedures document. That will be brought back to you at a later time. There's an addendum to item 1401, the actual documents that were not posted at the initial release of the agenda. And then an emergency item 1405, that is the nomination and approval of Fay Norris as District 4's alternate member for the Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee. Item 1602 is withdrawn. That is denial of charter school application for Orange Avant-Garde Academy at their request. And I believe, Chairman, you are moving Pacaro from the personnel agenda to 1605, and Harshman to 1603.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I find cause to amend the agenda suggested by the superintendent, and I have a motion to do so.
I'm sorry, I said 1604 and 1605.
Okay. Thank you. It's been moved by Mr. Roach, seconded by Mrs. Gordon. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Show the agenda amended as suggested. We are now on the consent agenda. And we have one public speaker on the consent agenda, Mr. Ted Brown on item 14.04. Mr. Brown, I don't believe there's any opposition or... All right, you're a wise man, Mr. Brown. Thank you. All right. We have no other speakers on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or debate on the consent agenda? Seeing none, can I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved by Vice Chair Moore, seconded by Ms. Gould. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted unanimously. All right. Let's go into item... Mr. Brown, see what your eloquence achieved. Good seeing you, sir. All right, board members. We are now into four charter school applica... Actually, three. One was withdrawn. We're on 16.01, which is the charter school application of Florida Virtual Academy at Orange County. Dr. Jenkins? All right, Dr. Bernier.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Mr. Chairman, school board members, the item before you is 16.01. It's a request denial of the charter school application for Florida Virtual Academy at Orange. As in the other cases, when I introduced the first resolution, I have some items that I need to read into the record in terms of appeals if they should warrant. Currently, Orange County has 32 charter schools operating under contracts. Each year, charter school applicants submit proposals to the school board on or before August 1st for review. Prior to submitting an application, the applicant may submit a draft application for the staff to review. All charter school applicants are held to the same standards, and all approvals or denials are based on the requirements as set forth in the Florida statutes 1002.33 and 1002.45 for virtual schools. Florida statutes 102.33 and 102.45 provide charter school applications shall be subject to the following model application requirements. They break down in three general areas. The model application requirement for an educational plan, an organizational plan, and a business plan. The Orange County Public Schools evaluation process consists of a review of the application utilizing the Florida Department of Education's Charter School Application Evaluation Instrument by a review committee, a staff interview with the Board of Directors for the proposed charter school, and a presentation by the same Board of Directors to the OCPS School Board members in your work session. These steps were completed with all of the applicants this evening. The application currently under consideration is the Central Florida Virtual School Board, Inc., who is requesting sponsorship to open Florida Virtual Academy at Orange for 455 students in grades K through 12. Based on the complete review of the process, there is sufficient reason to believe that the Florida Virtual Academy at Orange has not successfully met the requirements of the charter school application process as outlined in Florida statute. These factors are too great to reasonably recommend at this time the acceptance of this proposal, specifically the following are the most significant elements of statutory purpose and/or charter development criteria necessary for approval that we feel to be inadequate. The Mission Guiding Principles Purpose Section partially met the standard. Target Population and Student Body Section partially met the standard. The Education Program Design Section partially met the standard. The Curriculum Section does not meet the standard. Student Performance Assessment and Evaluation only partially meets the standard. The Exceptional Students Section partially met the standard. The English Language Learners Section only partially met the standard. Governance Section does not meet the standard. Management Section partially meets the standard. Educational Service Provider Section does not meet the standard. The Employment Section only partially meets the standard. Student Recruitment Enrollment Section partially met the standard. The Budget Section partially met the standard. And the Fiscal Management and Oversight Section only partially met the standard. Therefore, the applicant for the Florida Virtual Academy at Orange is encouraged to further refine the application and address these outstanding issues. A submission for the 2014 application review cycle would be appropriate after these issues have been addressed adequately. Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bernier. All right, board members. Any questions or comments before we ask if there are any speakers on this one? All right, I don't have any speaker cards on this particular application. Is anybody showing up tonight to speak on agenda item 16.01, the charter school application for Florida Virtual Academy? All right, seeing none. Board members, can I entertain a motion on this applicant? Mrs. Robinson. Okay, Vice Chair Moore.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we approve the staff recommendation to deny the charter application for the Florida Virtual Academy.
All right, is there a second to that motion? It's been seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion? All right, board members, we're voting on the denial of the application of Florida Virtual Academy in Orange County. Everybody understand that? All right, seeing no debate. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Show that motion passed unanimously. All right, we're now on what was formerly 16.03.[1680.06] We are now on what was formerly 16.03. 16.02 is withdrawn. This is approval of the charter school... or, excuse me, it's a charter school application for Acclaim Academy. Dr. Bernier.
Dr. Jenkins, school board members, Mr. Chairman, the recommendation action from the superintendent is to approve the charter school application for Acclaim Academy. Again, just briefly, I'll remind the court stenographers who pick up this transcript that we have read the background and the other evaluation process into the record. I can assure you as a school board member and for the public listening that the entire evaluation process was covered with this application using the Florida Department of Education's Model Evaluation Instrument. It was the entire application was reviewed by a committee, the staff interview with the Board of Directors was held, and a presentation was made before you as a school board in a work session. Acclaim Academy is requesting sponsorship to open Acclaim Academy for up to 1,400 students in grades 6 through 12. This application was submitted by the deadline of August 1st. Acclaim Academy has previously submitted and made improvements to their application allowing for this recommendation. Based upon the complete review process, there is sufficient reason to believe that Acclaim Academy has met the requirements of the charter school application process as outlined in Florida statute 1002.33. The states... the statute's purpose and required application components necessary to properly administer and operate a charter school benefiting all students has been adequately and reasonably addressed. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the charter school application for Acclaim Academy. Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bernier. All right. Board members, are there any questions of Dr. Bernier on the application of Acclaim Academy? All right. Is there anybody who has come tonight that would like to speak on the recommendation to approve Acclaim Academy? Okay. Ms. Moore, can I have a motion?
You can. I would like to make a motion that we approve the application for Acclaim Academy for a charter school in Orange County.
All right. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Ms. Gould. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Yeah, I'm going to punch my butt. I would like to say one thing on this one. Good luck. I wish you the best. I feel like, and I said this when you came before us, that there has been a market and a need by some parents for a military academy among our charter schools. I just really hope you all do succeed because I think that military academies, for me at least, can be a little bit... what's the word I want to use? Intimidating is probably a good choice of words because if not done right, I think that they can be bad for the system. But when done right, I think sometimes it's what some students simply need to succeed, both in school and in life. So I wish you all the best. With that, is there any further comments on that? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the application of Acclaim Academy, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that charter applicant approved unanimously. Congratulations, gentlemen. All right. Dr. Bernier.
The last item this evening, recommended action, is to approve the charter school application for Ueda Community School. Ueda Community School is requesting sponsorship to open Ueda Community School for up to 320 students in grades K through 8. The application was submitted by the deadline of August 1st, and again, all OCPS policies and procedures regarding charter school applications were followed. Based upon the complete review process, there is sufficient reason to believe that the Ueda Community School has successfully demonstrated and met the requirements of the charter school application process as outlined in Florida statute. The statute's purpose and required application components necessary to properly administer and operate a charter school benefiting all students have been adequately and reasonably addressed. Therefore, the recommendation from the superintendent is the approval of the charter school application for Ueda Community School.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Board members, any questions or comments on the application of Ueda? Mr. Roach.
I would just... I would say that I really liked this application, and I thought that their mission was very, very clear, specific, genuine, and appropriate. And I wish them the very, very best. I really liked the idea that they were really, truly looking for kids that needed that extra leg up, and I think they'll do just that. So, good luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. All right. Board members, any further comments or questions? Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on the application of Ueda Community School? All right. Seeing none, can I entertain a motion? Ms. Cato.
I move that we approve the request of the superintendent to approve charter school application for Ueda Community School.
All right. It's been moved. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Roach. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the application of Ueda Community School, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted unanimously. Congratulations. All right. Dr. Bernier, anything further?
No. Thank you.
Are we done, or do we have another round coming at our next board meeting?
No, sir. I'm happy to report that this is the last charter application for your consideration for this cycle of charter apps.
Hallelujah. Dr. Bernier, I want to thank you and your team for your hard work and your leadership. I think I speak for the entire board when I say you and your team truly do an exemplary job of steering us through this process, and I know it's a ton of work for about five or six months for you. You work hard all year round, but thank you.
Thank you.
And you know what? It's a little bit self-serving, but I want to say it anyway. I want to thank this board for all the attention that you pay to these applications. You know, when we looked around the state, not every board, and the applicants, I don't even think are aware of this unless they're applying in other districts of the state, not every board goes through every single applicant and holds a public hearing for each one in which they spend 45 minutes to an hour, and it's a giant commitment on y'all's part, and it's exhausting, but I think it's important. So I just want to commend the board as well. Agenda items. Mr. Rodriguez, do you have a report?
Board members, Mr. Chairman, just one announcement with much chagrin. We've got to announce another executive session, so I do apologize, but this is in the matter of Hodges versus the School Board of Orange County. So here goes. The School Board of Orange County, Florida, will meet in an executive session November 12, 2013, immediately following a scheduled 5:30 PM school board meeting on the 9th floor, Superintendent's Conference Room at the Ronald Block Educational Leadership Center located at this address to discuss Curtis Hodges et al. versus the School Board of Orange County. The meeting will be transcribed by a court reporter, and the transcript will be made available to the public for inspection or review at the conclusion of the litigation. Following persons may be in attendance: members of the Orange County School Board, Superintendent Dr. Barbara Jenkins, myself as general counsel, Henry Skip Jewett, Steve Burris, Michael Sasso, and Nicholas Shanin, all as outside attorneys representing the district and a court reporter. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I may also remind you that in the next couple of weeks, you will see our office preparing for the November 5th meeting before the Board of County Commissioners. That is the hearing at which they will make a determination on the West Orange Relief Site. I understand that maybe one or more of the board members may be in attendance. I would just ask that if you attend, please just separate yourselves by at least one or two individuals so that we can have non-issues with regards to the government and the sunshine provisions. And if you're texting, hopefully it's personal texting. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Rodriguez? All right. Dr. Jenkins, any report by you, ma'am?
Thank you, Chairman. Very briefly, reminder to board members that October 26th is our second Parent Academy. It will be at University High School. Connect Orange message went out this evening to parents. It is from 9:00 AM to 2:30 at University High School. And a couple of very timely topics to be covered, including bullying and cyber issues that our parents have to deal with, along with Common Core and just good parenting provisions. And so certainly encourage any board members who were not at the last Parent Academy to drop in if you have an opportunity. That's on Saturday, October 26th. I always hesitate on mentioning these type items, and then Ms. Gordon reprimands me for not sharing it. On November... I'm sorry, on October 26th, I am to receive the education award at the Onyx Awards at the Rosen Center. I don't like mentioning it because I'm not trying to sell tickets or anything. And you know what? Well, let me mention one other one, and then I'll make my statement of humility, Chairman. November 6th, I will be in Tallahassee with four other finalists, superintendents for District Data Leadership Award. Don't expect to win, but certainly am honored that I would be among the finalists from the superintendents in the state. And I have to tell you, the reason why I don't usually bring it up is not simply because I'm trying to show humility, but honestly, I want the focus to be on a leadership team that works well with this board to accomplish whatever it takes for our students to be successful. And so I don't usually tend to like that kind of light being directed toward me, but I certainly am appreciative to staff and those who supported those nominations. And now, Ms. Gordon can't say I didn't tell you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Dr. Jenkins, no need to be humble when you're good. And your successes reflect well upon the district, so we're proud of you, and everything that you win as far as awards really does reflect well upon Orange County Public Schools. Ms. Moore.
Dr. Jenkins, I just had a question. I know we're having another work session on the 14th of November about Parent Academy, but I was just curious, the background with the creation of the Parent Academy. You know, for the last couple of years, really been thinking about that, the concept of informed choice and how, you know, our parents... And it really came up last Thursday when we were talking on the ESE audit, when we got talking about the fact that there was not the same accountability measures for ESE students who were going to private schools. So I was just curious, in this Parent Academy, do you see it going there, where you see it being helpful for our parents to be better consumers? Not that they're not good now, but I just have such concern for them of having the knowledge base to make the right choices for their children.
We can certainly make that one of the offerings. I will tell you that the background and history, Title I schools have long had a requirement, a set aside of a portion of Title I dollars to go toward parent education and parent participation, and have used it in different means at the school level. We have worked, had a concerted effort to have a district-wide focus for parent education and moving a specific Parent Academy all over the district. And so the first one was at Robbinswood, and the next one's at University. We will hit every zone of the district. The focus is behind good parenting, to partner with your school so your child can be successful. And honestly, Ms. Moore, I believe if we keep that message before our parents, it really will phase into the notion that you ought to make informed choices that are just good for your children. And where we've seen parents taken advantage of, it is due to no fault of their own, lacking some skills in parenting and just wanting what's best for their children. So we're focusing on good parenting and partnering with your school and understanding what a good education looks like from the home front.
Oops. Thank you for that.
Ms. Flynn.
This is the time for announcements, right? Can I bring some? On November 9th at UCF, we're having an OCPS Day with UCF Knights, so it's their homecoming game, and special tickets of $20, they're going to be discounted to 16, and a portion goes to our homeless department. So this is a partnership with the UCF Athletic Department. Ms. Sarah Ah of our OCPS Community Resources Department has put it together, and it's going to be a lot of fun, so I was hoping everybody could go.
All right. Let's go into committee reports. Ms. Moore, communications.
I'm glad you called me. I was checking my calendar for a football game, and I've lost my notes. But anyway, we did have a communications meeting today to discuss, and I'm going to try to find it on here, I'm sorry. Oh, I just had... Here we go. It was 11.03. It was this report on the special operating milligan. And if you recall back in 2010 in November, when the citizens graciously passed a referendum allowing the school board to have an extra $83 million a year, we had made a commitment to annually report back to the public about how that money was being spent. So there is a document on your board docs. We did today, make some cosmetic changes to that document and made a few corrections, but it's anticipated through Mr. Dylan Thomas's public relations staff by around November 9th, 10th, 8th. I'm reading fingers at the back, that we will then follow the same procedures that we did last year with notifying the public as to how that money has appropriately been spent. So that is what our meeting was today, and we will probably have another meeting coming up, and I'll announce it at a subsequent board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mrs. Gordon, I know you've posted your report. Did you want to make a verbal report as well on the community action board?
Absolutely. I just want to highlight a couple of events that took place. The last community action board meeting was held in Apopka at the John Bridges Center, and we were happy to be there and hosted by the center. Johnny Risper was the director, and I believe that he's going to be retiring according to what came out of the meeting. So they're going to have it aired, I think, on the Orange County Government channel. One thing I want to note, that in the report, it generally stated exactly what each center that each person is a part of. I also put the financial report in here because it gives so much to the children of Orange County Public School. But there is a complete financial report in there. They were worried about some of the money being cut because when it cuts, it also cut the area within our centers. But I do want you to know that the GED Prep Boot Camp was held by Orange County Public Schools, and it was held at the Hal Marston Community Center this month. They did that this month. They also did the Shining Star Senior Prom, which a lot of the grandmothers who volunteer and read to our children were able to attend a senior prom, and they asked most of us to help. Another area on the East Orange Community Center, parent involvement is one of our main issues this year, and we did a Parenting Skills for Dad, and that was done by several of the churches. And the Orange County Head Start worked along with Orange County Public Schools and the Community Action Board in helping with that. Another area that was very important, we did the ribbon-cutting ceremony of the refurbished basketball court. The Orlando Magic did that for the John Bridges Community Center, and all of the elected officials were invited to that. And, I'm sorry, that's coming up. That's coming up, if I'm not mistaken. That's coming up October the 26th. So they are asking you, the school board members, to be there since we are part of the Community Action Board. So that will be between 2:30 and 4 o'clock at the John Bridges Community Center in Apopka, and it will be in Building A. So a lot of the Magic players will be out there if you want your picture taken. It's a wonderful event. When they refurbished the basketball court, we had the pleasure of having several of them refurbished. We did a partners appreciation luncheon, also at the John Bridges Center. And the last thing, they did the wellness and then the GED. So the GED is very, very important. They have had a lot of... I have a video, and I'm going to ask Mel to try to get that video to you. A lot of our students go through the Community Action Board, and they talk about the goodness of the board. The last group that came through, they graduated from Boone High School. They spoke about their troubles, they spoke about their struggles that they had, they spoke highly of Orlando Tech and Mid-Florida Tech. Some of the other students spoke highly of our technical schools. So, you know, I'm really... They asked me... I've never heard anybody really complain about, you know, the physical makeup and structure, but I mentioned to them that was a great forum for the mention of the sale tax and the renewing of the sale tax. Our technical schools need to be really revved up. I really... I had a book, I think I gave to Mel to pass on to Mr. Morris, of our technical centers, beautiful technical centers that just enhance the community, and it would be so nice if we get the sale tax and see to it that Orlando Tech, you know, Winter Park, all of our technical schools are really brought up to par because we have outstanding graduates from our high schools going into our technical schools and doing so well. So there is a success story. It's about 20 minutes. We may have already sent it to you, I'm not sure, but I'm going to ask Mel to look at it and make sure. We requested it from the county. I really wanted to play it at the board meeting, and I think we should play it at one of the board meetings and invite that student, one particular student, that graduated from Boone, and spoke about her struggles and where she is now. I think that the Orange County school system would be very proud of our graduates and how they are making it and going back to school and becoming success, be very successful. So that pretty much ends my report, and there's another meeting on Wednesday. That's going to be held in the morning. So the Community Action Board is very involved with... It's a part of, as I stated before, Teresa Jacobs and all of the county programs. It intermingles with all of the cities, and we reap the benefit here at Orange County Public Schools. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
That ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Mr. Roach.
Yeah, board members, I need to get my memory refreshed on something, and I talked to the superintendent about it and got her report on it, but I will tell you, the night we had the work session with the guidance counselors here, I know that what we came out of there with was extended hours for high school... out of there with was extended hours for high school counselors, but I walked out, and I apologize for this because I've probably told a bunch of people, thinking that we were going to hire, we were going to ask the principals to use their elementary counselor a lot, but for an elementary counselor in our elementary schools. I know Mrs. Gordon spoke on that. I think Mrs. Robinson said something about that, but I'm understanding now we did not decide that. So I'm confused. I know we added about 11 positions, but I was so clear about it. And so am I the only one that was clear about that? And is it just, do I have some timers? Is that what it is?[878.57][878.57](laughing)
Some timers. Never heard of that.
Well, I'm just curious, though. Where did I miss that? Was I just, I must have, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll be candid. I don't recommend, I don't recommend, I don't remember that, Mr. Roach. I really do not.
Okay.
But I may be mistaken, frequently am. Ms. Moore?
Yeah, Mr. Roach, my recollection was we were primarily dealing with the concerns about the schedules and utilizing high school time as fast as possible to get the kids into classes because that's where I've heard the concern. But I, at the time, I know, I heard you mention it, but then we didn't really talk about it, and I guess I had some concern about flexibility for the principals and requiring that when we, you know, our staffing modules are not where they were back in '07. We don't have the same budgets that we have. So I didn't understand that we really discussed that separately because I'm not sure I would have supported it.
Well, the president of the Counselors Association was here as an elementary counselor and spoke specifically to that. So that's why I'm wondering where the confusion was. The high school deal was almost a secondary piece of the information to me. Now, it's just, but I'm certainly willing to abide by what the board came up with, but I really, I missed that one. I swung and missed on it. I did not know that. Till just today, I found out that we did not have that. But that's what the board wants to do and values that, not to use that position or give that flexibility to principals to hire reading coaches or deans or CRTs or whatever they want to do. That's what it said.
Ms. Gould?
It is. I would just suggest that maybe we check back or have somebody check back to the minutes and see. And in the future, as we, you know, move forward and reevaluate the budgets coming up, that depending on how that conversation shook out, that we bring it back because I think, you know, it seems like every week we're hearing about another shooting, and we certainly all recognize the role that counselors can have in helping stabilize children at an earlier age and have counselors, but we need the budget dollars at the same time.
Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman. I did speak with Mr. Roach. I had staff go back and check the minutes. There was not consensus on that matter from the board. Actually, Ms. Moore's recollection is fairly accurate due to some preference that principals be allowed flexibility because they are held accountable for their outcomes. Certainly, that does not mean it cannot come up again as we look at plans and allocations and budgets for next year, but the record reflects in the minutes from that work session that, and I shared this with Mr. Roach, that there was not a consensus to make the counselor position mandatory. You will recall, in some instances, there were outside agencies providing services, and principals were using different configurations, and so we did not hear a consensus, nor does the record reflect that that was the will of the board. But we are certainly open to having that discussion again, as I shared with Mr. Roach.
Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, I recollect quite a bit of what Mr. Roach stated. I think we all have some major concerns, and my major concern is similar to Mr. Roach in the fact that I've been a school counselor, and we've advocated for counselors at this board. In some kind of way, we lost it, and when, some kind of way, we lost it. We try to stay away from operations, but then we don't feel our schools are operating within our district the way that they should be. Then the community does not hold the superintendent or the chairperson, the chairman of this group responsible. They hold the individual board member elected from that district responsible. They don't hold Mr. Sublett, and they do not hold Dr. Jenkins. I think that this board needs to go back and look at something that what we did when Mr. Roach did chair, and it was very important where we worked with the superintendent, and I heard Mr. Sublett referred to this many times from his experience in the legislators when he was in the legislation. Doing legislation up in Tallahassee, you know, people would go in and say, hey, look, this is my pet peeve. I know that this would work. Why can't we try it? I also think we need to go back to where each board member, we had a budget. We had a little budget of some kind, and we could take that budget. The city commissioners do it, the county commissioners do it. They all have some kind of little pot. We have nothing, nothing. And I think we need to come back together and take one of, that was Mr. Roach. I'm going to just be honest. He knows that I'm hard on him, but that was one of his best areas. I think I advocated for counselors along with him at that time, but I pushed librarians, and we all pushed music teachers, PE, music and art. When I go back and I go to sleep at night, and all I could hear is Mr. Roach screaming in my ear, all for a whole year now, the schools that are failing do not have certified and qualified music teachers, art teachers, librarians, guidance counselors, or none at all. And when I sat down today and I looked at the gap, we're the gap. My entire district, pretty much, we're the gap, but yet we don't really have the services of the gap. We have asked to piggyback and ride on the gap, but we're the board, and I don't feel good doing that. I think we need to get back together, get with the superintendent, let her know what is important to us, and then we, those weak areas that we have, the weakest link, that we see that the community is talking to us about. And year after year, when I saw Mr. Roach bring the failing of not having certified even librarians in those failing schools, and they're not failing schools, but they're schools that received a failing grade because they didn't qualify. Then there's time, we do something, but we keep doing the same thing, and we keep getting the same thing. So I'm at the point that we, as a board, go back and look at those fine arts areas and look at the librarian and the reading coaches, and are the reading coaches being used for CRT positions and stuff like, because that's what happened. We discovered that at the time he was there, the CRT was like an assistant principal. The dean was like an assistant principal, and we allowed it to happen because we were in a crunch. But now I'm beginning to worry because those schools do not have certified people in them, and they are Ds, and they have received Fs, and they're low Cs. And if we did not get the scores the way we did, they would have probably been lower. So I think we need, if we could go back, each one of us have a project. The superintendent worked with us and let us know. We take that little bit of money, and we thought it was never heard of before, but we did it. And we said, well, I would like this, because people are coming to me, and I want to applaud Commissioner Daisy Lyman for seeing enough to put someone at Rock Lake within the area that she did. And I just feel bad about it because we are the ones that should be doing that. That's a weak link. I have people coming to me, Gordon, I would, we paid for the librarian at Eccleston. We didn't pay for it. Universal paid for it. And I could go on. Universal paid for the tech teacher. All those years, Jan saw to it that those people were being paid for. Some of them are still being paid for by some of our philanthropic, our philanthropists trying to give money to our school. So, and then we succeeded. So I don't know. I'm like Mr. Roach. I'm a little frustrated. I think I heard what Mr. Roach heard, and I thought that we were going to go back and utilize the counselors in a way, but I'm a little nervous right now. And as I told Dr. Jenkins today, this is October. January is a roll. We're going to be out in November for one week, and we're going to be out in January, and we're going to be out in December for two weeks. So I mean, I know what that schedule is like. I know where we're supposed to be at a particular time, and it really kind of scares me right now. We're looking for volunteers to go into all of our schools to help. So I would like to see this board at least have a pet peeve. Maybe you all don't want it, but for those of us that would like to consider a pet peeve and take it, as Mr. Roach had said, well, let this go too, or let mine go too. I think we should have something that would help our district improve, and that is my recommendation for things to be discussed under that agenda item.
Okay. Well, what would you all think of this? Why don't we tee up a work session? The budget is always a fluid document because it's a forward-looking document. So we'll tee up a work session on budget concerns, and by that, I mean, that's euphemistically saying.
We know we can't do anything this year.
Mr. Roach, that's for the issue of the guidance counselors. You can discuss that issue then and see what, where the board is on it, librarians, art teachers, et cetera. And also, we'll bring, we'll put on the agenda for that work session, board allocations. Okay? And we'll get that done before the new year. Okay? All right. Any other committee reports? I don't believe there are. Board members, any other policy-level issues you'd like me to tee up for a work session? You'll be happy to know, we do not have a work session on Thursday.
My mic's on.
Oh, Ms. Cadle, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Ms. Cadle?
I don't know if it's a work session or if we need to do a communications meeting to make sure that Mrs. Gordon can attend, so be later in the day, but I think we need to talk about everything we are asking of the community as we're planning on going out for the half penny, you know, just what are we looking to the community for? I know the philanthropic strategic plan is important, but there's a part of me that worries that we may have our hand out too much and we might need to prioritize. And so I think we need to have a discussion about that issue, and I do remember something about a celebration coming up at the work session, I mean, at the retreat, but I didn't know we were totally moving through with it. So I think we need to have a discussion with everything that's going on between now and, say, November, and what things we're doing, and make decisions to really talk through them. So I would like to suggest that we have an opportunity to look at that and look at what we're asking the community to support us on, and maybe we need to rank some things. I don't know, but I just want to make sure that we're moving forward in a clear, you know, in a clear and focused way.
Well, we'll do that. We will do that. We will add to that work session. I will figure out what to call it, but I understand what you're asking. Okay? Community request?
And I have no preconceived notions on it, but I think that we, as a board, need to have that discussion as we look from today until the sales tax referendum, and what are we exactly looking at?
Okay. All right. We'll get that teed up. Any other board member requests? Okay. Work sessions, we don't have one on Thursday. Is that right, Ms. McGill? That one was moved. Okay, but we do have a very important one coming up on the 29th on the ELL Metis Report. So...
Sorry, but Mrs. Gould and me, and now I think I'm hearing Mrs. Moore, we will all be traveling to Albuquerque that day.
Okay. Well, we'll look at the attendance and make sure we have enough there. And if we don't, then we'll move it. Okay. All right. Any other questions on the work session schedule, folks? You have it in front of you. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. We are adjourned.
I'm a student at Harvard.
I'm IT.
Caltech.
Columbia.
Our advantage? Support at home plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.